Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the town Town of Newcastle board meeting of March twenty fifth twenty twenty five. The board has been in executive session. Uh we are starting a bit late tonight because we had our um retirement celebration for Jill Shapiro who is very sadly retiring after thirty five years of service. So I hope you'll forgive us for that. This is Jill's last meeting. And uh so we uh we were saying our goodbyes. Um in any event, uh may I have the board has been in executive session and I would like a motion to open up the work session. Salad.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to start the work session with the discussion of our nine eleven memorial. Um I would like to welcome Mike Wolfenson who's going to who's who has always worked very hard on the memorial. And we thank him for that and he's the memorial is in disrepair. And so Mike has a proposal for the town to consider in uh the way in which we can go about uh improving the memorial and repairing it, making it better.
Correct.
Should I go with the other?
So Mike, you're welcome to welcome and please come up to the microphone and uh we can start.
Very short. Good evening, hello everybody. It's nice to be back into this room again.
Welcome back.
Um so let me start off with this is Stefan Yarback. He Stefan is the original architect of the memorial. He was picked by the town board, not by myself, back in two thousand and five for the duck pond and then when we had the whole issue with the duck pond, it then moved on to Getney where it is today. There were twelve original people that tried to win the design and Stefan's group did it and he was gracious enough to come back and put in a lot of time already to just make sure that this gets fixed up properly. Uh just a little bit on Stefan as well. He's also working currently on the Central Park of Stone Ridge, New York, which is a two point one million dollar project. It's a hundred acre park that's right off their downtown area. So he comes with good credentials and he will talk more about the intricate stuff. I'm just here to do an overall and then I will leave it to him. So basically, it's been a long time since there's been some love to the memorial itself. If you walk it or wanna walk it with me, I can nitpick you every single thing that needs to be improved. There's just chips, there's falling apart, there's decay. The we had an original plan that did everything in layers. We've pared that down dramatically to focus on two points. The waterfall, which if you look at it, needs to be redone. It looks like a swimming pool now. There's no stones in it. There's no waterfall anymore. There's a PVC pipe that runs underneath it that just shoots water out, not even with the regular waterfall. And the fountain, which people take the rocks, they throw them around. Um at one point it had a shower head on it that went up in the air and the fountain it need it just again, it it needs to be fixed and it needs to be cleaned up. There's broken stones everywhere. It needs to be power washed. I mean it it's just it's been a long time since it's it's gotten a facelift. So the goal here is to focus on the waterfall and the actual fountain itself. That's our goal. We do have a larger plan. Um Mr. Yarback is more than happy to work with all the town committees and groups, the garden clubs and would work with town um maintenance people as well on how we can do more pollinator gardens, more natural gardens and what he has a plan for all that as well, but the main focus is what we talked about. So you guys were all given unfortunate, we had a communication error, so you should have got this with your packet, but my fault. But you can see here what we've outlined and what we've taken away. And this is it. I mean, we're trying to fix those two areas. The reason why I started talking to some of the board members about this in September of last year was that my goal is to give the town two years to get it really up and running and looking well for budgeting purposes, so that for the twenty fifth anniversary of nine eleven, we are understanding this budgeting to get stuff done. I am also do not have a problem looking for outside sources to also get stuff done. Um for the last twelve years now, we've talked about a Friends of Newcastle parking wreck, like the Friends of the library and this is what we've heard for the last twelve years. Um I've offered to be a part of that. I'm happy to help with that, but for some reason, we're still waiting on that.
Well, we do that through uh chill.
I know it's with the lawyers now or something.
No, no, but there's another through the county, we have the ability to do that.
Yeah, but it's it's it's.
Right.
They take like a they take a percentage of it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, ten percent.
Ten percent, I think.
And
An extra.
This would be more like how the Chapcoa Library has, the Friends of the Library or more like Chappack has the Friends of the Pack. Same sort of scenario. And then we can pull from outside funding and we can possibly also help with things that the town maybe doesn't have the wherewithal to do at this point in time. So that's why I'm here and I encourage anyone to walk it and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. It's not like these are little things. It's very obvious if you walk through it how tired the memorial is and it shouldn't be. People seem to like it and we're this year we're gonna try a different pattern, so.
Yeah, that was beautiful. Thank you.
Peo- peo- people are very excited about, you know, what we're trying to do and it just it just breaks my heart to just walk up there and see it where it could just need it just needs a facelift. I mean, it's as simple as that. So this is our proposal. Um if you wanna take a quick perusal to it, Stefan can talk more about what we're looking to do in regards to the the waterfalls in the area and then we'll wait here back for you. But again, the point is to come early is that we have two years to do it all and we can budget for two years and then we'll be done hopefully by September of twenty twenty six. And I do appreciate everyone's time.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
I just wanna tell you it's such an honor to be before you as it was twenty five years ago.
No, welcome back.
Thank you. And I've always been involved with the project. I've come back many times and offered advice over the years. And I think it was my I know that it was my passion in my presentation amongst twelve competitors that the town selected me to do the project in the beginning. And it's obviously a very important event in our lives and for the future. And I wanna assure you that the bones of the park are pretty much intact. I prepared a budget and a plan a few months ago, which you saw, which understandably was a large budget. And so what I've done, I'm just sorry, I have four copies, that's good. Uh the two large circles are the focus of this restoration. The upper falls, I call Lake Tear of the Clouds. The whole symbol symbolism behind the park was rebirthed. And so I chose the Lake Tear of the Clouds, the source of the Hudson River Valley as the source that culminates in the harbor where the Lower Plaza is. We due to budget put in river stones and things. Bad idea. It's been a maintenance issue. What we proposed to do and I will work with you, like giving you a revised budget, that's just a ballpark. And with your direction, we can create the layers toward the ultimate restoration. What I envision and it needs some design time is to look at that lower harbor area and where the river stones are, create pavers that allow water to go through. We would like two symbolic towers of stone with water that will symbolize the World Trade Center. But the water will be recirculated and it will be will not be a maintenance issue. I've met with the rec department and with Ike over the past few years uh about various concerns. The other issue is an annual expenses, great amount of flowers being bought for the event. What I would like to do is work with the garden club and we could provide the funds for the plants and work with them to put in a pollinator garden that has great floral beauty at mid September but is not an expenditure of several hundred if not a thousand dollars every year for mums. So create a permanent, continue the idea of having a pollinator garden throughout the park. And I've also given advice at other parts of Getney Park. Um I don't know if you have specific questions?
I think um in addition to garden club, I think you wanna involve the conservation board um relative to the pollinator gardens and.
Yeah, I mean this this is a perfect project for them. It's a perfect project for scouts and I will be available every step of the way.
I have a question. So you designed the current.
Yes.
Memorial. Okay, um and what year was that? How long did it do to build?
That was two thousand six, seven. We started, I designed the first park at Duck Pond.
So the park, so how old is the park now?
The park was christened in two thousand and seven, yeah, two thousand seven.
Seven.
Two thousand seven, okay.
And during the process of.
Eighteen years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's eighteen, okay. Um so so I see two um two fountain areas.
Yes, they.
Right, so. And forgive me if I are there two fountain areas? I mean, I I know there's certainly a water feature.
Yes, the water.
But are there two active fountains right now?
Sure. The the lower fountain, okay, so the upper fountain are the falls and that symbolizes Lake Tear of the Current Clouds.
Right. So that's current, that's exist.
We're we're not adding anything new.
Is that existing? Okay, that's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting at.
Yes. Nothing new. Nothing new. We're just rehabbing what we have.
So when did that stop working? The.
Oh, long there's been if you go back, if you go back to the rect of.
No, it's so it's not working now, right?
It's been. It it works, but it works because we have a white PVC pipe that runs underneath the actual fall. That then the water comes out of a PVC pipe. So when you look at it, you see stone, then you see a white PVC pipe and then the water comes down. And because the pond was not done at the time, it for whatever reason, it didn't hold the water right. So then they they basically just cemented, so it's like a pool now. Whereas it was a nat it looked at originally it looked like a natural pond with natural waterfall. Now it looks like the bottom of a pool.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out what happened. What happened to it?
And it's. It just over the course of time, the the town.
Uh-huh. How long have you been here?
Uh January of twenty seventeen.
Oh, hey.
Twenty s twenty seventeen.
So yeah, it we had issues with it then, uh when I first uh.
So it wasn't it wasn't working as of twenty seventeen?
Yeah. Oh, it's been not this has been this has been a long time.
Uh. And then we we fixed it. Uh I wanna say before the twentieth anniversary. We that's what we kind of revamped everything up there to where it looks now.
So.
So it's we 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 abandoned the old pump system and put a self circulating pump in there so that the water would get to the top of the wall.
There's still people here, you you abandoned the old pump system, so.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so how how long did that whole system last? What was the lifespan is what I'm trying to figure out.
The current pump system works, but it's just the physical, you'd have to physically see what it looks like now. Because again, it it looks just like a cement pond with a stone here or there. And this is about aesthetics. It's not about the waterfall works now. It doesn't work how it's supposed to work. Again, there were some issues too at the beginning because debris was getting in it and then the pump got clogged a lot, so it would burn out, as Ike will tell you. And this is before Ike got here. I mean thi- thi- this was almost within the first six years, before Ike was even here, there there was a pump problem because the they didn't have the right cage around it. And unfortunately, it's expensive to maintain it and so some maintenance stuff and and no not due to Ike or anything, just in general, just the town in general didn't have the funds to to maintain it. And now it's just at a point now where it just needs a facelift. So we're not looking to to add anything um we're not looking to add any new features. We're just looking to fix and facelift what we have there now.
Yeah, so what I'm trying to to get at is how because you know, we take expenditures of money pretty seriously, so I'm trying to
Exactly.
to figure out what didn't work out the first time and how we can avoid
Well, I'll give you a history lesson.
those things now.
The original pump system was set up for a completely different design. But in order to get the the um thing completed by two thou- by the September of two thousand seven, they changed a lot of the stuff, cause originally there was gonna be a water was gonna go down to the bottom. It was gonna circulate from the bottom all the way back up to the top.
That's how there's two.
And there was a lot of changes made in the in the last bit because they either the I mean, I I've talked about in executive session, but.
So bottom of the bottom of it didn't it didn't work out because it was for lack of a rush to make it.
It was a rush to get it done and they changed it due to lack of money.
And it was awarded to a low bidder.
I yes, I mean that 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 happens.
That's.
But but some other things like that were told at the time.
Well, we went through the bidding process. We went through a proper bidding process.
Oh.
Right, oh yeah, yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no.
That wasn't here, so I'm just trying to gather all the facts.
It was a full yeah, ev- everything was done. But towards the end though, they saved where they could. And by they, I mean the town and things were said to me at the time that, oh, we're gonna change it, cause you have to understand too, I raised thirty thousand dollars of money for that location and gave it to the town. Um for example, the benches that are inside the the upper area where the fountain is, those are supposed to be rounded. They're squir- they're straight. And I was assured at the time that they had bought the rounded ones. They had not come in yet. They were never ordered, that because they just never did it and they left it was there. So there was a lot of things that were done at the end. If you walk, it's a little not level. There's all sorts of stuff where it sunk. It just there's a lot of things that were just again, towards the end, they had to redo the concrete twice already. Again, even before Ike has been here, that because they the quality of the work when it first was done was not a hundred percent. I don't know how else to say it politely.
What was the original budget and expense?
So.
I have no idea. I mean, I could find it in my notes, but I don't have it off the top of my.
So when Mike came to a Parks and Rec meeting in the fall, he brought this to the Parks and Rec Commission and his liaison, I was there. And so Ike and I took it upon ourselves to go out into the in the fall with Mike and Stefan and we walked it and I took a lot of pictures. I think I showed you guys at the time. And I could attest, like there are certain things that, you know, in a rush needed to be patched or needed to be fixed. There's the PVC pipe, so there are things that are unsightly. There are things that could be fixed. There are things that I understand we wanted because we were having a ceremony, we wanted it to be working and we wanted it to be functional, but maybe wasn't with an eye towards the long term enjoyment use aesthetic of what it was meant to be.
And to Ike's credit, every year he gets it up and running, so that at September eleventh, it is up and running. And it's every year you're doing something. It's never like, oh, we don't have to do anything. It's always something.
And I think we would like that to be less of a thing for Parks and Rec, but they we don't want them to have to continuously maintain this.
Right.
Right, something. Yeah.
It's just been a patch job ever since.
Right, so just I just wanna get to lessons learned and what can we do this time around so that those things don't happen?
Yeah. Yeah.
I I know you said it was hard to maintain, so what can we do now to make the maintenance not so hard?
Well, the the the. Ike's change of of the pump was it works really well now. And now we just wanna reroute it so that it just comes over the water and not through the BBC. But that pump, I you know, that worked, cause we wanna we had to go off the oil, cause it kept burning out. So it wasn't as if it it again, the patches that were that were done work, but they were patches and the problem is before I got here, there were patches. So you've had twenty years of patches and it's never been a real, let's just dig into it and fix it completely improperly. And from the the fountain standpoint, the fountain was never supposed to be what it was and that was done because the money wasn't there or they just wanted to get done and those stones were never supposed to be there and they're all over the place. People just take them, they throw them, they they're broken, the cement's broken, the the curb around it is and as I said, at one point for years, you just had a shower head in there. And again, to Ike's credit, when they nine eleven does come around, they pull that out and they and they have these two towers that they use that are temporary, but they look nice. But then, you know, then we put them back away because they're just not gonna, you know, sustain long term.
Okay. All right, well, I think what we're going to do is take a close look at everything you sent us. Thank you very much
Sure.
for the map and for the detailed itemization of everything. And I think um we'll probably have more questions, so we'll we'll give you a call.
Sure.
No, that'd be great. Again, my hope is just that we move this along so that we don't miss a planting season, so that
Yeah.
again, the whole point of coming super early was that we have two years to do it.
Yeah.
I I think it's I thought you said I think it's critically important. I think you did a great job with this and I know this was I don't realize it's your baby of yours, but this was something that you fostered and make happen and it's something that I'm confident the town wants to see through to make sure that it's what it should be.
Well, we very much appreciate even the time to do it. So I mean, it again, we're all working for the same goal here and I think it it'll be good and what what the whole point is that we're gonna try to figure it out and that's all we wanna hear. And but but time is of the essence in the sense of if we can get plantings or if Stefan can get in front of if we need to get in front of the conservation board, we'll do that. If we need to get in front of the garden club, we'll do that, like.
What type what type of a timeframe are we looking at? Like when would we need to pull it? No, but like when do we need to pull the trigger
I would think so.
to get the plantings done to start everything? Like I would.
That's that's it. That's all it.
Yeah.
It's that it sounds imminent, because these things take time and you have to be like, uh, yes, it's even.
Yeah.
Well, that that's well, that's that's why we're trying to do this earlier to get in front of the board, you know, before last year, but just, you know,
Right.
schedule's happened, so that we would not miss one planting season, cause you only have two basic planting seasons before we can do something, cause the goal would be twenty twenty six, September eleventh. It's in a great state.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's I can feel soon.
And we can do a long term plan too, so every year we can do more and more. People can volunteer and do more and more and, you know, it so that it brings it back.
Well, we we definitely most certainly care about the nine eleven memorial. It's very important to us, to our town. And it's important to keep the memory uh of nine eleven and all of those who you know, who went and volunteered and risked their lives, all those who lost their lives. It it was um, you know, terrible terrible thing and it's important to honor the memory in a in a good way, so.
Well, I think the thing, I'm sorry to interrupt you on that.
We know we so we really appreciate all the work that you have been putting in and the work you put into this um proposal.
I'll leave the community with this and the whole point of the of the memorial always was it was to remind people of the spirit of unity and community that we felt in the days after nine eleven. Because when my friend was lost, who was a Chapcoa resident, it when he and when his wife and I discussed what we wanted to do and what I was trying to do, it wasn't to be a sad place. It was supposed to be a place of contemplation. It was supposed to be a place where you could just remember the feeling of whoever you lost. If you did lose someone, how good they made you feel and it was the spirit of unity and community. And that was sort of the rally cry that we used when we did this twenty, you know, twenty years ago. And that was the whole point of it. It's it's about and be- and because of that, we've always tried to make it a community event. Bringing in the Boy Scouts, bringing in the garden club, bringing in the Girl Scouts, bringing in whoever, you know, the Fire Department, the CIVAC, everybody. And that's always been the goal and that will always be the goal of it and that's why we built it.
Thank you, Mike. That's that's really important, really important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Stefan, can I just ask, um
And thank you for coming.
we have three different zones here. Um can this work be phased? So I'm I'm trying to look at it from a financial standpoint where
Sure.
there are no funds in the twenty five budget allocated. It can this be phased or there's certain things that a smaller portion of this that could be done this year if the if the board chooses to go with this whole design, is there something that we can maybe fit in this year and the bulk of it could be moved to next year when we can budget or or how do you envision this?
Certainly can. And it's important to know that I haven't done a detailed analysis yet. Once you say go, I would do a detailed analysis, work with Ike, see where the major problems are and do a triage. What can we do for this September? What can we do the following years? But absolutely, everything can be done in a phased situation. And maybe it's not too late to engage with a garden club to do that type of planting, the some more permanent perennial planting at the site, which will save you the annual cost of mums.
I I also wanna be a little bit careful when we do this, Stefan, that Ike is an integral part of the design.
Absolutely.
Because his guys have to be able to maintain it, because the the problem with the old design, I don't have to tell you, that that that
Yeah. Yeah.
thing didn't work from basically, as soon as the the ceremony was over, um
Right.
you know, it it stopped functioning. Um and so I just wanna make sure that that we're not repeating, you know, the mistakes of the past with this.
Yeah.
Um because his guys have to be able to, you know,
Right.
maintain it. They have to be able to troubleshoot it. Um you know, we have an irrigation company. Ike's got irrigation all over the fields. He knows how to maintain basic irrigation without a problem. And certainly the with the um recirculation pumps that uh that Jonathan put in a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
So I I just won't, you know, wanna be a little bit careful about that going forward.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was trying to get at. What didn't work the first time, you know, and you're telling us the timeline of when things broke down, so that's important to know so that we could um, you know, pa- you know, piece things together to figure out what we could do differently this time to to make it work.
Right, you know, just to be a li- a little bit careful, I'm all for trying to do the planting this year and phasing things in, but if there's gonna be heavy duty
Yeah.
construction there where we're ripping up sidewalks and putting it in, then we shouldn't be touching the plantings until that's done, so just.
Yeah, absolutely. Right, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds like it makes a lot of sense to ensure that Ike is involved from the beginning.
It it should be noted that he has been.
Good, okay.
We have, yeah, this he's been involved in every step of the of the process.
Okay, and.
Whether he likes it or not.
He lives here. So you're kidding? He lives here.
Always a question. Yeah, I'm delightful.
Okay.
I had a question and I lost it, so.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, tomorrow.
I have to follow. Okay, that's ours.
So Vicky, I know the next thing on the agenda is military tribute ban, but we talked about um
Right.
uh wanting to discuss the authorization of hiring Joel Dikter. Um and I didn't know if maybe you wanted to just discuss that um. Um yes, I had actually had that from my supervisor's report, but we could definite we could definitely, no, it's on it's on the uh work session agenda, so yeah, that is fine. Um so let me let me get my notes. So let's see. So on the consent agenda, we have a proposal to hire special counsel um trying to find my notes on this now. So hiring special counsel Joel Dikter of Dikter Law um to represent us in the Con Edison petition to increase uh to increase our rates. Now, everyone would have heard of this because there've been a lot of rallies and a lot of talk about Con Ed's proposed increase. And this would be an increase for gas like and electricity for New York City and Westchester. And what this would be is part of a three year settlement to raise rates starting in uh January of twenty twenty six. So Con Edison submitted a petition to the Public Service Commission and there's going to be an eleven month process through which the PSC will determine whether Con Ed has asked for an appropriate increase in rates. Con Ed has requested an eighteen percent increase, which um for residential delivery charges would be about twenty five percent. And for natural gas delivery rates would be an increase of nineteen percent. So when you add up all the numbers together, it adds up to an average of a twenty percent rate increase um over the next three years. So what's happened is that municipal officers, mayors and superintendents, super supervisors, excuse me, um have gotten together to talk to the special counsel to um to understand what it is that we can do. So um it's it's important to have a strategic approach at this point. It's not going to be enough to go to rallies and, you know, voice loud complaints about it. We need to be, we need to have a seat at the table. In the past, New York City has been well represented and Westchester has not been represented at all. So um at the end of the day, the decisions are made during the settlement proceedings and there's an entire process which includes a de- a discovery process with the PSC, an evidentiary hearing, which includes cross examinations and briefs leading up to a decision. Um Con Ed files testimony with witnesses, um their exhibits, there are just an opportunity for response and rebuttals. And ultimately, a hearing will be scheduled for z- for June. So New York City is well represented. Westchester so far has no representation. Um so the issues for us will be not only requesting that the rate increase is not as high as they propose, but also the allocation of the increase. How much will go to New York City and how much will go to Westchester? In addition to the the rate increases and the allocation, there are issues of capital improvements. So New York City is set for getting capital improvements to their system, whereas Westchester has no capital improvements um on the docket. So we could intervene to ask for increased resiliency in our systems. For instance, um when we know that there's a power outage, they can stage the restoration efforts to to be there quickly and restore power much more quickly than they have been. Um for instance, you know, adequate tree trimming and other kinds of resiliency measures that could be put into our system. So if they're going to do these uh conduct these measures for New York City, Westchester should not be paying for them or in the alternative, they should provide us with some um some improvements to our infrastructure. So I would highly recommend that we join in the effort to hire the special counsel to get representation. Uh the deal is that we would not do this, if we agree to do this, the condition would be that we have at least twenty municipalities who join. Uh the special counsel has agreed to cap their fee at a hundred thousand dollars. So if twenty municipalities join, that would be five thousand per municipality. I believe that at this point, there are more than twenty municipalities, so it. it it would probably be under five thousand dollars and I would suggest that it's well worth the money so that we don't get the short end of the stick and again not have a seat at the table. Um what's going to make the difference are these settlement talks that take place as opposed to, it it's important to be vocal as well. I I think the rallies are important to raise awareness, but this part of it has to be done as well. So I recommend to this board that we be part of this process and that we um you know, that I sign the letter of agreement to join in the effort to hire the special counsel.
I I I wholeheartedly support that, if you don't have a voice, then you don't have any ability to make any exact change, whether we're successful or not, it's certainly worth a five thousand dollar at most gamble um to have an advocate, so I I'm glad that you followed up and you this came to you and you pursued it, because I think it's important that we join in. So I I fully support.
Good.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree. Okay. Alright, so Jen, hi Jen.
Hi.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I think there's a lot of um concern in the community and so this definitely represents what people are feeling
I think. Consent and community, so it definitely represents what people are feeling aggravated about, so
aggravated about, so like Jeremy said, it's definitely worth the five thousand dollars on behalf of the community.
like Jeremy said, it's definitely worth the five thousand dollars on behalf of the community. Yes, okay then.
Thank you.
So yeah, so that'll be on our consent agenda. Okay. Um so another topic on our agenda is the military trib- tribute banner, so we're proud to offer the New York Military Banner Program again for twenty twenty five, um to honor veterans and active duty and National Guard members. Uh the military banners are displayed from Memorial Day through Veterans Day. And they'll be displayed in the Chappaqua and Millwood hamlets. And uh I believe the space is limited to twenty banners, is that right Jill?
Um I think we're doing another um eight eight, we have uh room for eight new banners
That's what I see.
this year, um we already have um I wanna say we have twenty five banners that have been already um produced from the past two years um that we're able to um uh accommodate, so.
Okay, so is that thirty three, thirty-three banners?
Twenty-five plus.
Yeah, right in there, um yeah, so.
About, um thirty, should we say thirty-five to round it off and squeeze some?
Sure, thir- sure.
So we'll say the space is now limited to thirty-five.
It's just it's not, yeah, it's just it's not thirty-five new banners, it's third, it it's total, right.
Total. Total, I understand.
So I just wanna be aware of that.
Okay.
Um and.
So for a new ba- banner, the the cost is two hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Right.
I'm correct, but a renewal rate is fifty?
Right, and whether you're requesting a new banner or requesting an existing banner be rehung, both of those applications have to be made online.
Okay.
Is the application open now?
Is Is there a deadline for?
Um April first, it opens April first.
Okay. And is there a deadline, I mean obviously we need to have it up by Memorial.
Um our deadline right now is April fifteenth, um but the sooner people get them in, the sooner the the better off it is.
Okay.
Um and Lauren Cascone is gonna be um supervising the the program this year. She's available for um you know questions and certainly you can call her, all this information will be in the next e-newsletter. But the actual application and the uploading of a photo has to be done by individual family members online.
Okay, so though is there a spot on the website, a prominent spot on the website, so people can click and ju- just download the application?
Yeah, re- re- Yeah, it'll go on, um it'll be on in the next e-newsletter and then it will be posted on the um on the website as well.
Okay. Okay, alright, thank you.
Right.
Okay, and now uh Rob Deary is going to present the preliminary fourth quarter uh financials.
Good evening, um I am presenting what will probably be my last uh financial report to the town board.
On the last story.
We will now to other things.
I have a thought, that's right.
Uh and and hopefully Carl will will be presenting the next one. So um I call this the preliminary fourth quarter financials, the onsite audit was completed last week by O'Connor Davies. Uh now there's a little work that goes into producing the financial statements after the onsite audit and that's some work that uh Carl and I will work on over the next couple of weeks, uh O'Connor Davies will come back in probably mid-May I would assume and present the um final report to the town board and we'll have the updated financials with fund balances, et cetera. Tonight, I'm just kinda giving you a a raw summary of just revenue and expense and just what that looks like. I'm not gonna project fund balance, the numbers that I put on this first page for the financial summary represent the fund balance that was allocated in the twenty twenty-four budget. Um so just looking nine percent, nine point two four percent over the budget, uh expenses were up slightly, one point one two percent. But um as you can see, revenue over expense means we'll end up with a surplus in the fund. Expense over revenue means we wind up with a deficit, so um we will wind up with a a surplus in the general fund. Uh those numbers are great and this is the summary page, I'll go into a couple of the drivers for each one of these numbers um in the subsequent pages. Uh next, looking at the highway fund, that was a little bit closer, uh the revenue that we received was about six point two million, about four point zero six percent over budget, expenses were up slightly, six uh point three million, uh it's about three point eight percent over budget. So we did allocate a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in fund balance, so if you see the delta there, it's about a hundred and fifteen thousand, give or take. Uh there may be some adjustments to that, so that's within our fund balance, so basically it that's considered a would be considered a bal- balanced budget there. Um one of the reasons the expense in the highway fund uh can go over budget, once we get the CHIPS numbers in uh in mid-June, and we usually, we don't know what those are and the state is continuing to fine tune those throughout the year and we typically get more than they originally um tell us we're getting. So we'll put that right back into the paving budget, so uh I think last year we got uh maybe a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty thousand more than we were anticipating and we ended up paving a hundred and thirty thousand or so more worth of roads than we had anticipated. Uh refuse fund did really well this year, uh the revenue was up three uh it was three point nine million, up about five point three nine percent. And expenses actually came in under budget, I'll tell you why that was in a minute, three point nine million, pretty close right there, within about five hundred dollars of each other. But the expenses there were three point five six percent below the budget. Uh and we actually allocated three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars worth of fund balance, which will not be needed in the uh to reconcile the twenty-four uh financials. And finally, the water fund, uh ten point three million was the revenue, that's up about five point nine percent over budget. Uh expenses were nine point nine million, down about three, three and a half percent per uh against the budget. And uh the fund balance there was six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, so we will not need to uh to dip into that. In the general fund, looking first at the uh revenue, total revenue coming in from all of our recreation programs was one point two eight four million dollars. It's up about thirteen percent over what we had budgeted. Uh and I broke out the camp program, five hundred and nineteen thousand, um and that was about hundred and three percent of the budget. Uh so you see what a a big proportion of the recreation programs overall, the summer camps are. Um and I think we've budgeted a little bit more even for twenty twenty-five, we know how successful they've been and they sell out pretty quickly.
That's great, that's why we wanted to increase enrollment, so.
We had a great year in building permits, we brought in one point five million, it's up fifty-seven percent uh over budget. We're probably gonna see those numbers slow down in the future, I think we're pretty close to having issued all the building permits up at Chappaqua Crossing. So that's been kind of driving uh that budget line over the last two or three years. And that looks to probably slow down, although uh our overall activity in the building department is always strong, so I would see a dip from that, but will probably, that will remain strong for the town. Uh another one that was uh a bit of a surprise, interest earnings. I think we all kind of expected interest rates to drop uh over last year, uh there were predictions in the beginning of the year, there would be two Fed decreases, three Fed decreases, well, not only did they not decrease, if they they left it steady for most of the year, I think they decreased it right at the end, but not enough to make a difference. Uh that combined with the fund balances that we had and we have all our money put in N Y class, which is a pooled investment account. We're making about five percent, between five and five and a half percent on our money in there. And we had at any one point in time between twenty and thirty million dollars in that account, so you see how much interest that throws off. Uh mortgage tax was up about sixteen percent, one point one million, that one is always difficult to predict. Um I've seen the numbers uh for the last couple of months and that's definitely trending downward. I think anybody that talks to any real estate agents in town will tell you there's not a heck of a lot of inventory left in town. Um I think the properties are are selling at a high dollar value, but there's just not a lot of them on the market from what I hear.
Is the building in Chappaqua Crossing also influencing the mortgage tax?
Uh if they have a mortgage on it, yep, I mean if they pay cash, no, then you wouldn't.
That would probably, I think it would go down to some serious.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah, um you know Josh gave me the figures for the first couple of months of the year and they were they were very slow, so
If it was spot on.
so far, although I will say the beginning, the first half of last year wasn't promising and the second half picked up once the summer came, so I guess we can hope for that this year. Uh sales tax came in about fifteen percent above budget, uh four point nine percent. Uh the economy, in spite of what you might hear nationally, uh Westchester County sales seem to be strong. Uh the numbers I've seen for the first two months of the year are up over even twenty twenty-four's number, so we did raise that a couple hundred thousand in the budget for uh twenty twenty-five. And Christina, commuter parking, looks like it is coming back, uh seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, that was up against a budget of I think six fifty or six seventy-five.
Yes, Christine coming back.
Um we're still below COVID, uh pre-COVID numbers, pre-COVID numbers were um usually between nine hundred and nine hundred and fifty thousand, so we're we're still below that number, but we're getting closer, yeah. Yeah, if you look out at the parking lot on a Tuesday or Wednesday, uh over the last couple of weeks, it's pretty full.
What what's the number of full-time permits, full full permits?
Um I have to, I have a, I have a, I have to look at this breakdown, yeah. It's different now, the um parking person more meter, purchasing meters and we've.
It's a little different now because more people are purchasing the meters, um permits and then um they're paying the meter. Also, we opened up to more non-residents.
Right.
But it is coming back, it's very strong and although it's not totally full, it's just because I think the flexible um schedule of people, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Got you.
Does that mean that we theoretically have more capacity if it's not being used every day?
Well, we're getting close and I don't, I do think things are getting more normal in addition we use that little open space quite often for different things, so I don't, mm.
Okay.
You talking about the back of the lot?
Yeah. So, I don't think that's that.
So in in the past, we used to, when the lot was full every day, we used to go through and after the morning rush, when all the cars were there, we'd go through and count empty spots. We stopped doing that during COVID because it wasn't useful, there there were more empty spots than there were full spots, but
Mm.
we've asked the uh chief to keep an eye on that and uh I think we said like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to ask him to count the empty spots for us, so we can kind of get a better gauge on on how many spots are available.
Yeah, sounds like if if it stays shifted, even if it's, even if the permits are back and there may still be other adjustments we can make.
We and we don't stop selling to residents or non-residents, so we had a you you can tell me for out, you know, turn anybody who wants to, open everybody who wants to, have fun.
Uh just to wrap up the general fund revenue, um if you looked on the books, you'll show the property taxes came in a little bit under budget. The reason that is, that's a uh an auditor's entry and that has to do with an an allowance for uh uncollected taxes, so this it's a book entry, but it does show up on our financial statements as a as a decrease against the budget. Okay, looking on the uh general fund expense side, everybody will remember back last uh at the end of last summer, July and August, when we had to renew our liability insurance. The overall liability insurance for the town went from about eight hundred thousand to about one point two million dollars. So you'll see that as a trend coming through all the different funds. Uh that hit the general fund for uh an increase uh of about forty-five percent, overall four hundred and thirty-five thousand charged to the general fund budget. Uh the next two categories, and I've mentioned them before, uh the New York State retirement was uh was a surprise, they give estimates in the summer and then the invoice comes in December. Um that ended up coming in a little bit higher than I had expected and higher than it's been in the last couple of years. So it was up about seven percent uh versus what we had budgeted, to two point two seven five million. And uh our health insurance went up over the budget four point two percent. Um the town's uh membership in Mepco has kept our rates lower than N Y ship, uh but unfortunately what goes along with that, sometimes you get a little bit of a swing because we are uh essentially a self-insured program and over the last couple of years, we've had some higher claims, so uh that caused our rates to go up just a little bit over what we had anticipated. A couple of expense lines that came in under budget, I'll just point out rec admin salaries, we've had uh it's been a little turnover in the rec department over the last couple of years, they've had an open position and that's why that shows about twenty-four percent under budget. Um I think Ike has just finally got the county approval to uh to post the position that we've been looking to hire and hopefully soon he'll be at full staff. Um and Lino, thank you, legal fees uh came in under budget, I think that was uh and I can knock on wood at this point because I'm talking about the past, not the future, uh we had a pretty good year uh legal-wise, uh we didn't have a heck of a lot of Article seventy-eights. We did not have any contracts to settle, we didn't have any uh huge employee disciplinary issues, so all the types of things that come outside of the retainer, we didn't have a lot of those in twenty twenty-four, so we'll just keep our fingers crossed that twenty twenty-five continues that way. Thanks, Lino. Uh jumping over the highway fund, uh not a lot of sources of revenue in the highway fund, basically um property taxes and then some of the state aid. Uh interest income like uh like we saw in the general fund, that was up uh for the highway fund, we were able to credit a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Uh the CHIPS funding, we had talked about, uh I mentioned previous, uh I think we budgeted four fifty, so it came in at five sixty-one, so it's a about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars over budget that we put back into the road paving. And um for whatever reason, we we get reimbursement from both the county and the state for snow and ice removal on uh county and state roads that our town staff completes. And a lot of times, this is a matter of timing, the state, I I'll sometimes get multiple payments in one year and then it's just a matter of timing, it's nothing to be concerned about, but we didn't receive all that we were expecting in two thousand twenty-four.
But they always.
They always, yeah, we always get it and and that'll show up as a variance in the audit report, 'cause sometimes, you know, they'll say, well, you expected seventy-five thousand, you got a hundred and twenty and like, well, yeah, I wish I had received it in the year that we should have, but
Right.
but we do get it. Um on the expense side, uh like I mentioned with the general fund, uh liability and health insurance again, um those are a couple of the drivers that were over budget in the highway fund. Uh road paving, again, as I mentioned, we paved almost one point six million uh dollars worth of road paving, it's about twelve percent. Um Jill, I think one one of the things that uh we can all and and Jeremy take credit for is uh that number was about what, three, four hundred thousand when you and I started working together with you as town administrator and Rob came in and then Jeremy soon after. Uh we were really, let our roads kind of deteriorate for a little bit and uh we're now up to one point five, one point six million each year and uh we're definitely showing our roads the attention that they should have had all along. Um that was uh what, how many years ago, eleven, twelve years ago? So we've steadily increased that, we've been able to increase that each year. Uh we did have a good year in twenty twenty-four, uh as far as snow removal, uh salt purchases were down about seventeen percent against budget. And uh road maintenance materials down about thirty-nine percent against budget, um that's poplatching, et cetera.
Rob, I have a, I have a quick question, 'cause I know this is not what we're talking about tonight.
Sure. Sure.
But when are the salt purchases made and at some point I'd like to talk about what the options are for different materials? But when are the salt purchases made? And at some point, I'd like to talk about what the options are for different materials to use.
So I think the contract renews in August or September of each year. And um it's purchased throughout the year as we need it. We have a salt dome and Bard keeps uh, I don't know, usually six, seven, eight storms worth of salt in the dome. Um we do kind of have to provide a a minimum amount that we're going to purchase each year um with the contract. So we've got, you know, if we say we're gonna, we're gonna use a number, you know, two hundred tons, we've got to take two hundred tons, even if we only need one fifty. It's it's written into the contract that we have to kind of estimate how much we're gonna use and we have to buy at least that much each year. Um so that contract, I think, is up, I think it's the beginning of August each year and then uh the state bids that, it's a state contract, it's not anything we go out to bid for.
Okay, 'cause at some point, I'd like, I'd like us to look into um environmental concerns regarding, you know, runoff with the type type of salt we use and versus effectiveness in what we need to use, so I just would like to.
Right. Right, so you'll, everyone will notice that before storms that we know about, the DPW crew crews are out and they're brining the roads.
Yes.
They leave those stripes of pickle juice, everybody will see.
Yep.
Right. Is that literal pickle?
Yeah, liter literally pickle juice. Um and that is one of those environmentally uh safer alternatives to salt. Because you don't have to, when you salt a road, obviously it bounces all over the place and it's not controlled as to where it actually ends up. Where when you brine, where you put it is where it stays. Um and Bard and our DPW have been on the cutting edge of uh that technology for, must be ten years.
Yeah, so we used to purchase the brine, which was.
Yeah, we brined it ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, whi- whi- which was expensive, um because we had to truck the liquid in.
We actually have brine operation.
It's in our operation.
Yeah, yeah.
So instead, we, back when Jerry Marshall was here, they bought a machine that creates the brines, just a big tank that mixes the salt with the water. Um and.
And another, yeah, another chemical and we actually produce it ourselves down at DPW, load up our machines and go with it.
Yeah.
Do we sell it?
Um. We we actually were selling it for a short period of time.
I thought we did. I thought we sold to Pleasantville or something.
Yes, to Pleasantville until they got their own.
That's great.
Yeah, they, they.
That they, who knew it was a a product in, you know, in in demand, but it it was.
Yeah. Well, kudos to to the town for doing that for so long and for people who care about.
Yeah, no.
Uh.
Yeah, and I think, I think residents know they ever have, you know, unfinished pickle jars.
That can be.
Yeah, sort of, sort of, but um I I know that there has been some internal discussion about salt and salt usage and things like that. Um but I think uh before the board gets too far ahead in those conversations, you should bring Bard in.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just flagging it to say that we we can talk about that again and um
Uh. Yes.
You know, even on top of the brine, uh we could still take a look at the salt choices again.
And if the board recalls, yeah, and if the board recalls, uh the Indian Brook um overlay district, that was one of the big concerns. There is being cognizant of the amount of salt that was used.
Yes.
Um and if you you remember, we got a little bit of pushback from residents who were like, we need to be able to salt our, you know, driveways and our walkways so that we, you know, we can, we can get out safely.
Yeah.
And I think you're gonna find that balancing act is where, you know, we we try to walk the line in between.
Absolutely, safety is definitely an important factor.
It'll be a very interesting conversation.
It's a priority, safety is a priority. Um okay.
Good.
Lauren will just jump to uh the refuse fund, we'll look at the revenue there.
Okay.
Uh we have a lot of revenue sources in that either. Uh interest earnings, as with other funds, was up significantly. Uh compost and yard waste has been up a bit. Uh compost seventy nine thousand, yard waste fifty six thousand, uh those are both around ninety percent of an increase over budget. Um so that's uh yard waste is any of the uh debris that people drop off at our DPW yard. And then uh we run it through the horizontal grinder, which is uh brand new. And uh and then we turn around and distribute that and sell that to the town, I think. Uh I think Vicki just mentioned that in the newsletter, I think it was last week or the week before, about uh multi-sales beginning for the uh for the season.
Mm-hmm.
Uh other side, uh uh refuse the expense, liability insurance, insurance again, up about fifty one percent. Uh maintenance and repair, that's up about fifty nine percent. Um that's the repair to, while we did replace the horizontal grinder, we did not replace, I think it's the trommel screener. Um and I think that's repairs to some of the roll-off uh vehicles we have as well. Uh contractual cost, Santa Pro actually came in about one point two four percent below budget. Um that's like con.
Like, it's all relative.
Yeah, the uh.
Human error.
Yeah.
We know how much they, we know how much they have gotten up and.
Yep, uh transfer site charges also went down slightly, uh six hundred and forty three thousand, down about seven percent. And the health insurance, just because of the way that we um reapportion it, it's based on salary. So uh salary for the refuse district, I think we had some turnover there, um some newer positions and and the apportionment went down a little bit. So the overall health insurance bill was higher, but uh what was attributed to the refuse fund went down a little bit. And finally, we'll talk about water. Uh overall, the total revenue for water was ten point three million dollars, it was up about five point nine percent from budget. Um interest income again was one of the drivers. Um as far as water sales, uh water sales to our outside customers ended up being higher than it was for our uh internal customers. So IBM and Mount Pleasant were both up, uh forty one and thirty seven percent respectively. Uh water sales to our commercial accounts, which include, I think, three golf courses, was up about sixteen percent. Uh but on the other side, general metered sales, those are basically the residential sales uh throughout town. That was down uh six point seven one percent just slightly.
Rob, do you have any idea why Mount Pleasant was higher? Is that something that we might expect to continue with some of their new developments or something?
I don't know, they have um we're working on the water agreement. Um they used to have minimums that they were required to take from us and I I think with the expiration of those agreements, uh that kind of went away. Um but specifically, no, I'm not sure if it was those developments or not, that number kind of goes up and down each year. Um so I'd have to check with Bard to to see um what he, what his thoughts on that were. And lastly, the water fund expenses, uh they were below budget about three and a half percent. A couple of the ones that weren't were liability insurance, again, up fifty one percent. In the ozone system maintenance, we've done some significant overhaul of the uh three ozone generators that we have there. Uh children, recall the year that we replaced them. Gonna say it was around two thousand eight, nine, ten, something in there, but they um they're about fifteen years in world. So uh they required some significant overhaul last year. Um expenses that were down, the excess uh per capita cost of water, that was down about sixteen percent. That's the number that we have to pay each month, um if we exceed a certain level of water usage in the town. That's one of the reasons we have the tiered water rates, um where actual users over ten thousand cubic feet pay an actual higher rate because we get charged a higher rate when we exceed this. Um so I think we had a fairly wet, I guess, up until probably the end of June last year. I think once we got into August, September, it was really dry. Uh but I think the early part of the year was wet, so uh it didn't trigger that excess per capita until later in the year. Um power at the water treatment plant was below budget, I'm I'm not sure if Bard was expecting uh a higher increase from Con Ed or Power Authority, but that was under budget. Uh the variable variable cost of water, um that's just the water that we buy from New York City, that was down about four percent. And the Veolia contract, which we actually renegotiated um to have a cap on the cost. So at the time we budgeted for twenty twenty four, we didn't have a cap. And the um inflation rate was was pretty high and Bart was able to renegotiate a a deal with a cap on that. So that's why that came in under budget. So as I mentioned, I will uh, we'll be back in May with financial results, uh probably will have Carl in front of you. And uh I think everybody got a chance to say hi to him tonight, he was hanging around for a little bit. Um you'll get to hear more from him in May and you'll hear from Alan Cassay as well, from O'Connor Davis.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Um it occurs to me that we've been remiss in not recognizing that this is your last meeting as Town Controller. So I just.
I'm not actually going anywhere though.
I know, you're not going there.
Yes, we're going to here.
I think you're coming over here, I'm not sure.
You're moving a few feet um out here and back in your office too.
Yeah. Yes, that's true, yeah, yeah.
So I just wanna take this opportunity to thank you for the absolutely stellar work you've done as Town Controller. You've won awards for the town and you've kept the town um going really strong and always in financially great shape. Uh you've had a lot of foresight and a lot of um, a lot of organization and thoroughness in your work and I just wanna tell you how much um that's been appreciated over the years and we're glad that you'll be here.
Thank you.
And and uh you know, we have no doubt that Carl is gonna do an excellent, excellent job. But uh I just wanna recognize you for the stellar work you've done and and thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate it and I really, I have really enjoyed that job. Um I think I'll enjoy the administrator equally in a little bit different way, but I'm a numbers guy, I'm always um I'm always calculating in my head, so anything that happens.
Well, I'll I'll count on your calculations on how to handle upset residents.
We'll work through that for sure.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Alright, ready for some administrative items?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we've got retroactive payment of claims for both checks dated March eleventh and March twelfth of twenty twenty five. We've got the adoption of monthly reports from February twenty twenty five and the adoption of minutes from February twenty twenty five. If there's any edits on the minutes, just let Lauren know, okay? Um we've got an authorization to accept a cash bond agreement from Fisher, that's for mitigation plan dues in the amount of ten thousand three hundred twenty five dollars. We've got authorization to use town property. We've got um a resident who lives along Hardscrabble Road, who's having a weekend party when we're not using the art center and they're gonna pay us a nominal fee uh to be able to use the art center for overflow parking for their guests. We've got a certificate of insurance that's coming along as well. Uh we have authorization, another authorization to use town property, that's the community center, we're gonna be having a blood drive, uh we'll be taking and advertising that. We've got the authorization to hire water and wetlands for the Getney Pond Treatment. Um authorization to accept a donation from Newcastle Baseball and Softball Administration, um I'm sorry, Association. It's uh forty tons of infield clay for the Getney Fields two and three, it's about four thousand dollars worth of value. Um I can't begin to tell you how um, what a wonderful partnership it's been with Newcastle Baseball and Softball. Um they they've just been uh terrific and so supportive of the the town, it's it's a tremendous partnership. Um the board will be seeing a license agreement coming down the pipe. In addition to the clay, they've also asked us for permission to install a small shed um at the far end of Getney Park next to the farthest uh field, I'm not sure what number field that is, but there'll be a license agreement coming along for your approval as well. Okay. Um next is authorization to establish a capital project for the Chappack Solar. Um the next is a mouthful, but the long and short of it is, is it's the required resolution for the tap monies. And in technical terms, it is the authorization to implement and fund the first instance of a hundred percent of the federal aid portioning cost in a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds.
So question, question.
Um.
So it's a hundred percent of the first instance, so it it wasn't, it's not the five million, by the way, it's two point something.
Two, two point six million or something like that, right?
Two point six, so that's what they mean by the a hundred percent, right?
Percent, so, yes, um.
And do you have any idea when the second, when the second instance will be, will that be the other half, the remainder of?
Um. I don't. Yeah, so with with any of these um tap grants, um we will have to expend the money and they will take and reimburse us, so.
Hmm.
It's not like anyone's giving us a check for, as much as our check was really nice, no one's really giving us a check for five million and letting us sit on it.
It wasn't.
We'll have to be able to show expenditures.
You're saying it was just a prop?
You don't.
It was viewed very realistically.
Cause it's.
Okay.
Um we've got um authorization to attend the American Waterworks Association Conference for DPW, that's for Bard. It's April second and third in Worcester, Massachusetts, uh for a cost not to exceed nine hundred and eighty five dollars. The next is authorization to attend the Cornell Local Roads Program, um that's for Brendan Riley, our General Foreman. Um at a uh cost not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh we've got authorization to solicit, to solicit bids for water maintenance materials, highway maintenance materials and water chemicals. Um my apologies to the clerk's office for the uh for those bid results, it's like for every like nut and bolt and screw. That was, those were, uh, yeah. Authorization to renew, I have to, I have to tell you, I never miss that thing when I missed. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry. Authorization to renew the annual system support agreement with with NIC Systems support um for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. This is the SCADA SCADA control system, it's the computer system that um that operates our um the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. It's a proprietary system, so. The next is the authorization uh to purchase the leak detection services for town-owned water mains. Um and the resolution for authorizing the hiring of Joel Dichter of Fisher Law LLC, which we at least talked about in detail earlier. Um then we got authorization to approve the Sustainable Westchester MOU. Um we've talked, we talked about this with Noel Branson. Um was there anything um else maybe we wanted to talk about, just the a hundred percent?
Yeah, that, the default's gonna be a hundred percent renewable, the MOU, and then also when you, when you go to the consent agenda tonight, the only change you would make is as to that item, as to the MOU, it'll just be approved, subject to review and approval by the town attorney, that's all, that the MOU.
Okay, and uh you know, just an aside on the hundred percent renewable, that's going to be the default.
Right.
But as in every instance, any resident who we sign on to Sustainable Westchester's program and is participating has a right to reduce down to fifty percent renewable or opt out altogether at any point in time, and that remains the same. Uh next, we have authorization to award the bid for Hubbard's Cupboards, that's Meals on Wheels, um it's for seven dollars and twenty five cents a meal for uh for two years, um they're our current vendor for Meals on Wheels. The next is authorization to approve a banner request for the Chapakaw Children's Book Festival, um the event is on September twenty seventh this year. Um authorization to share in the service of Omnia Partners bid for the purchase of a town hall boiler. Um that's gonna be um a hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars in change. Next is a street opening permit bond release of an eight hundred dollar loop fund. Uh and authorization to purchase the license plate reader software uh and LPR for uh parking. So this is a new, uh two new license plate readers or LPRs that will work with our Penco system and also the court software, which will help with uh our enforcement. Um and last but not least, authorization to approve the East of Hudson Watershed Corporation operations and maintenance payment. Um it's an amount of eight thousand four hundred forty nine dollars and eighty nine cents and it reflects uh credit for the work done within town.
Okay, good, thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to ask for motion to adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we're now at our town board meeting. Uh Jill, do you have any announcements? Um Christina, do you wanna just talk about the town and county taxes?
Sure.
April taxes will be going out at the end of this week, so you should see them in your mailboxes um next week. Those, they, those are due no later than April thirtieth without penalty. Uh we will send out reminders as we always do, electronic uh e-alerts and um yeah, that's it, so. And they'll be uploaded online, if you're mine, you can pay online as well. Come with me, be a person, we love to see you. If you mail it at our post office, please, please, please be sure to witness them, putting a postmark on them. We have several, several payments that come in every collection that somehow tour the country. Um they'll end up in North Carolina, they'll end up California, so please, please make sure you get a, thank you.
Tell me the.
And they can be sent early and postmarked.
That's right, um we do hold post-dated checks, we're happy to do that, so you come in, date it for the thirtieth, we'll mail it and post-dated. We'll mail it and postdate it, but please, just get it in.
Can we still have the Dropbox downstairs?
Yes, the Dropbox is available twenty four seven, it's just outside the police desk. It is um locked and it is supervised by a camera, so it's a very safe option. And again, we urge our residents to use that instead of post. Good, thank you.
Okay, anything else for announcements?
No.
Okay, um so for the supervisor's report, I'd like to um you know, once again, I'd like to say something about Sustainable Westchester, but to point out that there's quite a juxtaposition with what we talked about in the work session with Con Ed rates going sky high with their request of approximately twenty percent increase to the P S C and are getting representation for Westchester. Uh and on the other hand, we have Sustainable Westchester uh whose uh M O U with the town will be something that we hopefully vote on and approve at this meeting. So as hopefully you know, in on the March at the March eleventh meeting, Noam Branson was here uh from Sustainable Westchester, talking about how their rates are back to being competitive with Con Ed. Um the renewal energy is actually on par with Con Edison. Uh residents will always have the option to opt out or you will have the option to go from our default energy, which will be a hundred percent renewable down to fifty percent renewable if you wish, or you can opt out altogether. Uh what's uh Noam Branson asked is whether we would enter into our contract a little earlier than usual to take advantage of the months prior to the summer when rates are down, and also to be more flexible because of um uh just the lack of uh predictability in the markets and the way the world is moving. So we're going to sign up for the twenty twenty five M O U a few months earlier than usual. So I al- also wanna point out that residents will have the opportunity to hear about Sustainable Westchester and their options at an upcoming meeting that we will schedule with Sustainable Westchester. Um we have yet to do that, but I will put notices out in the town newsletter, we'll put that out on social media. And how else have we advertised those um sessions? Have we ever put out a a standalone um email to the community?
No, we we haven't, you certainly can use the E alert system to do that and and let people know about it.
I don't know that I would use the E E learns or more for emergency, I don't know, we hesitate to to mix that up.
Yeah, uh. Yeah, we we yeah, we haven't, um you know, we've just done uh mentioning in in a newsletter that it's, you know, coming up, and then on the Facebook page. But um I think, you know.
Right.
Don't forget Instagram.
That's right, Instagram.
Mm, that's true. Let's do Instagram too, thank you for that. Um but I I do wanna point out the juxtaposition of now the Con Ed rates going up while the Sustainable Westchester renewable energy rates are the more advantageous, they had an we had an outlier of a couple of years. Um with the twenty twenty three, twenty four contracts and um you know, with the the higher price of natural gas due to the war in Ukraine, so that is something Noam Branson talked about as an outlier. So I think we're back to being on par, and perhaps will be lower, but I don't wanna predict that. Uh okay, so that was Sustainable Westchester, the other item I'd like to talk about is a follow-up finally to the Westchester County Cell Survey.
Hmm.
That's been a long time in coming, we've been waiting for the wireless companies to come back with in information. And they Verizon will be here on um April twenty ninth, we scheduled an April twenty ninth, which is a Tuesday board meeting for them to come and present to the community. Um so Westchester County did a multi jurisdiction study of wireless coverage. And Verizon will come and present their findings as to where they think they can increase coverage in town. Uh it will be an opportunity for our residents and for the board to ask questions and and to hear what they have to say, we will be asking them to come with coverage maps, with the parcel overlays. Um how many household would be covered by whatever plan that they present to us, et cetera. So we are asking residents to submit questions in advance to get the the most thorough answers we can get. Um please send in your questions by April eleventh, and who should they send the questions to?
Rob.
So Rob, great, so um we will I will put something in the newsletter as to how to send, so should they send to your email, do we wanna create um a dedicated email for wireless issues, or would that complicate things?
They could send it to public comment.
Okay.
And that would that would that would be a distribution, it'll be Rob, Christina, Lauren.
Yeah, that's right.
Who will gets it?
Lena gets it.
The board does it.
I would send it separate.
Oh.
The board gets it too.
The board, yeah.
And the board gets it as well.
Do we we get public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Just two two comments, number one, I I I would perhaps assume, obviously, people emailing Jill Shapiro, that's going to be forwarded, it's not going to disappear into the Newcastle universe.
Okay. Yeah.
Rob Dearie will get the ultimate email.
Will be a message for the members.
So Jill's email will remain active because it will have a I've retired message directing everyone to contact either Lauren or myself.
Okay.
Um so that will remain on, so that if anybody emails, it just doesn't go into nowhere. That they will see the bounce back message and they'll be able to contact us.
Another thing I would add is, well, we'll discuss this more in April and when uh with wireless, but it's becomes such a problem for some people like me who work at home a lot
Oh, yes.
that I actually just today, I had to call people using FaceTime audio because I could not keep a phone call, so I could not handle my clients, new clients, old clients.
Yeah. Don't tell anybody, now, God, that was the secret.
Yeah, what's that?
That was the secret, that was the only way we were able to get a call through, now you've blown it, no.
Yeah. Yeah, so so I mean, it's really degraded terribly.
Yep.
It's a real problem, I mean, I know.
I had the same problem when I worked from home, my phone doesn't even ring, it's right to voice now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, uh hundred percent, that's the issue I had today.
Yep.
We've all had these problems, I've had these problems too. Yeah, so anyway, so it's uh better late than ever, they will be here on April twenty ninth, and uh we will try to let as many people know as possible. And even if um they're not at the meeting, I think we should leave a public comment open for some time, for people to get their questions in, and hopefully we can get back to Verizon after their presentation. But I just wanna stress that the, you know, these are private wireless companies, so these are their plans, they're not the town's plans. But uh we're glad that they're coming and uh we encourage people to come. Okay, that's it for my supervisor's report. Um let's see, anything in addition for the town administrator's report, or you're?
Hard to believe I don't have anything to say.
Sign off?
Sign off.
Okay, alright then, so now uh it's time for public comment. So anyone, well, if there's no one in the audience in person for public comment, is there anyone online for public comment? No, no one is on.
I I looked up there and pre- I looked up there.
No, usually usually we hear from the back, so.
Or I looked up there to see if you were there.
I don't see anyone, uh and no one's hand is raised somewhere in the background, okay. Alright, so that will take us to consent agenda. Let's see, Holly, do you wanna start us off?
Absolutely, I move to adopt items one through twenty four as listed on the consent agenda with a note on item eighteen, the Google the Sustainable Westchester M O U is subject to review and approval of the town attorney. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I re- I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of three hundred thousand six hundred and eighty three dollars and twenty four cents. Listed on the summary A P check register and detailed voucher detail reports, all dated March eleven, twenty twenty five. Checks are printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Tuesday, March eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of fifty nine thousand two hundred ninety seven dollars and fifty cents. Listed on the summary A P check register and detailed voucher detail report, both dated March twelfth, twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh do one more, five minutes.
Yeah, do do up to five.
Okay, I move to authorize the hiring of Christopher Rikers as a seasonal labor within the Department of Public Works Highway Unit at the hourly rate of nineteen dollars effective March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals for the position of recreation attendant within the Recreation and Parks Department who serve as flag football counselors at the corresponding rates indicated below, effective April seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of Asher Moss to the position of student intern within the Development Department for total stipend amount of two thousand dollars for a period of six weeks, effective June twenty third, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I I move to authorize the hiring of Sophia Kong as a student experience intern for the creation of a mural for a period of three weeks.
Second.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I move to approve the employment agreement between the town of Newcastle and Robert Dearie, who shall be employed as town administrator under the terms and conditions set forth therein, effective March twenty ninth, twenty twenty five through March thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's official.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Here it comes.
You can't go back.
Not after I read the brain.
Not not after this.
I move to accept the resignation of Robert Dearie as comptroller as per the terms of the employment agreement and authorize the appointment of Robert Dearie as town administrator within within the administration department at the annual salary of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars effective March twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congrats.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Right, now it's too late.
Thank you.
I move to authorize the probationary appointment of Carl Schlegel as acting comptroller within the comptrollers department at the annual salary salary of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, effective March twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and welcome Carl.
Welcome Carl.
Although he's been here for a couple of weeks now.
Mm-hmm, do you want me to keep going, or you want Jeremy to take over?
Um Well, Jeremy, you can do the rest.
Okay, I move to approve the employment agreement between the town of Newcastle and Chief James D Carroll. In consideration of mutual covenants and promises with both parties agreed under the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement effective January first, twenty twenty five to December thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I move to retain Jill Shapiro as a consultant for a six-month period, not to exceed ten hours a week of work for a total of twenty forty hours in total at a rate of a hundred twenty five dollars an hour to assist with the chapline project. This agreement can be renewed upon consent of both parties thirty days before it is set to end.
Well, that didn't last long, Jill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They never let you go.
Thank you, Jill.
I move to approve the Bill of Sale and Art Purse Agreement with Jesse Rubin to create a painting entitled Memory Lane, which the town shall pay the artist one thousand two hundred fifty dollars, and the twenty five percent shall be payable by execution of the agreement, remaining seventy five percent of which shall be payable upon completion of all the conditions as set forth in said agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I I just wanna say one thing, with this approval and the previous hiring of Sophia Kong, we should have um hopefully a wonderful reveal of the mural, and we will be announcing the date, Jen Klein is here online, will be um will be announcing what that date will be, so we're looking forward to the mural reveals.
Pardon me, I move to authorize the reappointment of Ted Holmes and I Walter as members of Environmental Review Board for a three-year term effective January first, twenty twenty five through December thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You are not pointing this.
Okay, I move to authorize reappointment reappointment of Georgia Schwartz as a member of the L G B T Q plus committee for a two-year term effective March fourteenth, twenty twenty five through December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh I move to authorize the reappointment of Leslie Smith and Celine Barris as members of the Millwood West End Adv- Willwood S- pardon me, Millwood West End Advisory Ward for a two-year term effective March first, twenty twenty five to December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um is this really how to move here?
Think she's not even paying attention.
Yeah, I don't know if I wanna move to adjourn, but I mean, you know.
I will move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
On the record, I object.
Jeremy, the time was when she had offered her resignation.
Okay. Aye.
Jill, thank you for everything we've seen.
Gonna help you down, more is gonna help down.
Thank you guys, tonight was so lovely.
For real, I mean, you did vote in it.
I'm getting I'm getting, I have to vote aye, so you change my my name to aye.
Thank you, everyone.